Hospital Board appointment and one interested applicant.
Yeah, and then the West End Cemetery, Shirley Guard died, you know.
Yeah.
So her spot is open and I don't know if Casey was gonna look and see even what her...
It looks like...
But we were talking.
The 30th...
There's no interest in these. And the other one is Judy found three members for the St. Regis TV Board. There hasn't been any interest in that board for 10 years because they're not TV Board. There's three people, Jordan Cheeseman, that Steve Ahearn that works at the post office, and a gal that works for Muck and Perry by the name of Shawnee Bevins. And they were interested. I was gonna spend $300 and advertise.
Well, I think we should, you know, talk to Kathy from the Mineral Independent because she has kind of that in the mineral...
But I think she did, didn't she?
Well, yeah, but she has like those stuff that's, you know, she like the hospital or the health fair and she has kind of those little, what's going on in the community. If she could just say...
Community posts or whatever.
Yeah.
Because I thought maybe we could put it on that, on that page, you know, like where AA advertises on the back page there. And those, I think those are free, but they're not?
No.
AA pays too?
Yep.
Really?
Everybody pays, yep. But it's just a smaller ad, so it'd be cheaper.
Yeah.
Well, if it just said, you know, their openings on the, or the West End Cemetery District.
But that one would be an appointment, so I don't think that needs to be advertised anywhere.
Because you'd just be filling it or finishing out that term.
Yeah, I would think it would just, yeah, just be ones that when there's an election like the hospital board and...
Oh, she's...
She can dispatch? Does Caleb Boone work for us now? Where does she work?
Dispatch.
Oh.
Was there no applications or did it didn't?
Yeah, there was applications and I guess they hired. They interviewed and hired.
Did our HR get involved in it?
No, and I think that we need to maybe...
Were you invited or not invited?
No, and I feel that it's...
Nobody was. We didn't even know anything about it.
Not a vacation even knew about it till it was done.
So I think what needs to happen is, I think I need to be maybe present during the interview or something just...
Well, it's in the policy handbook.
Yeah. Well, I think every county that has an HR person, I mean, regardless of the whole commissioner being involved argument, HR is involved in every county.
Yeah, yeah.
No kidding.
And we need to, I don't know if there's like a procedure set as far as like if HR reviews the applicants, you know, or the applications first and like a pre-screening.
Well, I would think you would be the one receiving them, but I mean, that's just...
And that's when it's advertised, you know, it used to be in the clerk and recorder's office to pick up the applications. It should be the HR department now instead of the clerk and recorder's.
You have your own call.
Well, and when I attend that regional training, I'll ask other counties and see what they're doing.
Well, our Valley County, the HR person reviews the applications, goes through those, and then from those applications, then these are the ones that you're going to hire from. You know, they, she, their HR person reviews them first.
Yeah, did she get a booklet, policy manual? I mean, who gave it? Stacy, I guess? Did she give you that stuff?
No, she, like when she hired?
Yeah, did she get a packet?
Yes, she came to me and filled out all of her paper with...
Oh, she did after she was hired?
Yes, and she was, she was handed a job description and a personnel policy, so...
So do you know who the other applicants were or were there any? Don't know.
No.
Well, maybe we need to have a little talk.
Well, maybe after Casey goes to that training, we'll know a little bit more solid and we should, at our department director meeting, we'll have to just reiterate and say, hey, you have to go through HR, that's where the packets are gonna be, that's where the applications are gonna be.
The other commissioners should be notified, whether you have the time or whether you choose to, you know.
That's it, say, okay, this is the day we're having interviews, are you, you know?
I don't care if they like it or not.
Well, in our policy, it says that we should review the job description before you hire for the position.
In case you need to change.
Yeah, in case there needs to be a little adjustment or, you know, maybe it's no longer in those boundaries, I don't know. So I think it's definitely worth looking at, but...
So what's Shirley Guard's?
Oh, her term?
Yeah.
It expires, let me tell you. December 31st. And this is just a rough, so I'll have to get a definite date, but from this, it looks like she's done in 2019.
2019?
Mm-hmm.
It's not 2019?
No, no, yeah.
Yeah, no?
Yeah, because when did she pass? This year, 17? Okay, yep, so it goes till 19.
Their three-year term is up there?
Yeah.
And Jim DePree's term is up this, this year, but he didn't want to finish it out, so we can appoint this gal when, once she fills out her board application and stuff. And then next year, when, you know, they run again, she'll have to reapply. And we told her that she'd have to reapply again then, so...
So Ellen has a gal up there that she said had showed interest. Her name was, somebody just moved there, but she wanted to come to a meeting first. Michelle Lauer, she lives in DeBarge.
In the cemetery district?
Yeah. So we could have her come in. I mean, it doesn't like its life. And she said, you know, she said, I don't know if she's even interested. If she comes to the meeting, she may not, may not want to, so... And, you know, June Pantoulson's not around anymore. There shouldn't be anymore. Knocked down dragouts, I wouldn't think.
Is this lady gonna promise that she's gonna make 12 dozen cookies for the...
She might.
That's a stipulation of being on the board, you know.
I don't think he ever attended a meeting in all the time that he was, you'd have to ask him, but I'm pretty sure that he...
So the only thing here we need to deal with is one, one board application today?
I don't think we're doing any...
No, it's just the process, like how you wanna advertise.
We were trying to decide whether to advertise it or not.
Oh, gotcha.
You know, because it's, how much is it to advertise this to normal-sized ad?
I don't know. I can look. I don't know off the top of my head.
And really, like, it oughta, it probably oughta be the cemetery board advertising it, and you know they don't have any money.
They don't have any money. But yes, I think it should, could be only the ones that are actual elected boards, like the West End Fire, the hospital board. Those are the only two of ours that are elected?
Yeah, and...
That, that we're responsible for?
Is conservation? No, they never...
That's not elected one, that's an appointed one. I think it's just the fire and... I think it's just appointed. Just the West End.
But I, I could get with Stacy too and kind of review these and see what her thoughts are too as far as advertising.
Well, that's why I talked to her a little bit yesterday and, you know, like she said too, it should be up to the boards to advertise and pay for it, but then these boards don't have any money.
Right.
So the commissioners then should pay, well, I, we don't have money, so, you know.
Unless we can get DNRC or somebody to kick some of it.
Yeah, but I, I, you know, I...
For a cemetery, they might for the conservation.
But isn't that the clerk and recorder's responsibility though as far as the ones, elected ones?
Yeah, for her.
To advertise.
If there's an election, then yeah, she'd note, post-notice and...
Yeah, so, but the other ones, I think it just, the board should be aware of who's on their boards, their terms, and then when it...
I said St. Regis one isn't right because Donna's on there now.
Okay, so that needs to be updated.
I don't know if she took Tina or Robbie's, one of them.
With the non-elected boards, it should be up to the boards to know who's on their boards and when their terms expire and then just, you know, get the word out or whatever and...
Yeah, so I'd say Regis Fire is elected too, and the Superior Fire.
Yeah, but the Superior Fire is superior city limits. I mean, the town of Superior handles this, but theirs don't.
But they got a rural too.
I don't think that they have, theirs isn't elected, is it?
Says so.
Three-year term elected.
I've never ever remembered doing a Superior Fire.
Well, I think they've always appointed them. I mean, just reappointed them, you know. Dan Fowler's still on there, Alan Brockway.
You mean, since it's combined, the city kind of takes care of the appointments?
Yeah, I've never, I've never heard of them.
And the St. Regis Fire, I've never, I mean, the West End Fire, I know we've had, they've been on the ballot, and then the hospital board, but those are the only ones I've ever remembered being on the ballot.
It says the St. Regis Fire is elected, Superior's elected, West End's elected.
Frenchtown Fire is elected too, although we have to kind of...
We don't get to choo-, we don't get to choose, do we? Even though we gotta pay, you guys gotta pay taxes on it, you don't get a vote on it.
So I'm here today for the, just the signing of the preliminary conditional preliminary fat approval for Elk Run, St. Regis, and the issue, the findings, the facts. So we adjusted the main changes. I didn't make a copy for everybody. I don't, if you want to go through and look and review or whatever, but...
That's what you presented last week, so...
It's what we all discussed and talked about and stuff, so. There was a notation though about, I had put a notation in there about South Side Road that didn't make any sense, and I, that was in the findings, and I switched that and changed that. But anyway, this, this doesn't even indicate any action today, it's just a matter of signing it.
Signing it? Yeah, we already motioned and approved to sign it anyway, so...
And then this is the findings fact, just by you.
Oh, okay.
Tim, is there anything else before the planning commission these days?
Not really. I, we have people talking about potential subdivisions, but we just don't get here.
Well, you just said it.
Yeah, I'll give this one to you. This was funny, I guess.
Anything on Chirock?
Special one only, Chairman.
The Chirock proceeding, they are probably within a couple of weeks gonna start putting the sewer system in out there.
Yeah, I see there read signs of opening, bring the 2017.
Okay, so what was on the billboard at St. Regis there that was going north? Did they have the, it was the...
Didn't they have a Quinns one going north?
Huh?
Was it a Quinns?
There was a Quinns, but I think they put the one up there for the campground at, on Flathead Lake there, that condoized, KOA...
By lake, oh, camp.
Up by Flathead Lake at Poulsen up there, huh?
Yeah, a motor coach, just reference to motor coaches.
Yeah, they called it, they called it a motor coach thing up there. They said that that sign at St. Regis basically sold that thing out.
Really? Wow.
That's a real professional sign. I mean, it's a professional billboard.
Yeah, it was a...
The thing they got out here is tacked to a tree and it was...
No, they've got, they've got...
Oh, they got a big one?
Yeah, coming, I think it's at the Y, by the Y.
At Missoula, up on that side, they got Chirock and then they, they have another full one, yeah. I, I know what you're talking about there.
Is it Premier or is it Yesco?
Yeah, that's, so who, Premier must, those signs just west of the Y right there, those are all Premier, aren't they? They're not Yesco's, so.
I think they are Premier.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's where that one is.
You'll have to be more observant next time.
Yeah, I mean, I was driving out of Missoula one day and I looked and I thought, I thought that would've said Chirock or something. I just drove on by it and then the next time I come out it down, I'm like, oh, it does say Chirock.
Maybe I did glance and see it, but I haven't been out west for a long time to see that one.
Well, there's a, there one out here by Spruce too that has the big, the big...
People are so many in a row there, it's kind of easy to overlook them.
Yeah, Lady Bird Johnson's idea has kind of gone by the wayside.
So the guy that was beating Mr. Congenial to Yesco people at the MDT's?
Oh, yeah.
I'm understanding he's gone.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Well, Matt was saying that.
I think that was a, the push was the...
Somebody thought, sensed impropriety there?
Yeah, something was going on there.
Yeah.
But I've been, I've been seeing that it isn't like Yesco was gone, they're buying up signs. I've seen a couple others that up by Poulsen or between Pavel and Poulsen, I think they've picked up a couple up there.
Did Lake County ever get an agreement on limiting the billboards? They had a beautification committee that was working on limiting billboards in the Mission Valley.
I don't, I don't think so.
Ever happened?
I don't think so. I mean, I, the inherent problem up there is that every 660 feet there's a business stuck on the side of the road, so they can put a sign.
They can put a sign anywhere they want.
They're literally just sign after sign.
And they can either promote their own or sell space to promote something.
The least amount of signs is south thrown in because there's no businesses down there.
And does, and does being on the reservation affect that?
Well, they, they wanted to, but I, they couldn't because it was private individuals. It was private land. They tried, they didn't do that, but, yeah. It was incredible how much money they had to put into that road for all the crossings and stuff. But yeah, Chirock, I don't know if we really officially got the last of the water approval for Chirock, but the, they had to redo the sewer part of it and get it revisited and stuff, but there was a installer that works on these type of systems, come up in Poulsen, he's gonna come in and install it.
Huh?
I let the, let the locals know, but they shied away from the job.
Shied away from Chirock?
Yeah.
I kind of liked that guy. He seemed to have his stuff together.
Well, but, you know, he's, he's gonna be kind of on the ground and stuff, but watch out, hold on to your hats when now that this Gail Baumkirschner that has West Mountain Estates, they're principal interest in that right now.
Oh, really?
That's why the signs went up on the billboard signs. It wasn't, it wasn't Frank Ragland.
Huh?
It was George Sherwood and crew were gonna market those lots.
Which, which ones?
Chirock.
Chirock.
So what was the mention of the other subdivision you mentioned?
West Mountain Estates.
That the Wolverston one?
No, West Mountain Estates is on, Abboton on the west side, but Gail Baumkirschner was the last person standing after all the court proceedings to get the lots. But they've sold 10, they've sold 10 lots and have another four or five pending in there, so.
So Tim, in St. Regis, I know there's not anything that probably can be done, but that lot used to be Carl West Falls down there, kind of kitty corner across the street from, oh, it'd be north of Rosie Schreitenguss's, but closer to the community church. Got an old shop.
Weed patch and everything also.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And a little trailer, old, big, big trailer.
Yeah, well, there's two trailers there actually. One of them, the roof has completely collapsed this winter. That shop, the roof has collapsed. Is there anything that we can send those, it's relatives like niece and nephew at Carl West Falls is what I was told.
I wrote them a letter and then somebody gave me their phone number. And we called and I said, people are not only interested in your lot, but people would like to almost do a community project to clean it up. And they just didn't seem to be very interested.
I would think with that roof being collapsed on that shop, that that'd be a health and safety thing, you know? I mean, the, the trailer, there's a few trailers down there that the roof collapsed this winter, but that shop is, that's a big building, you know?
Well, that's, that's, that's probably one of the few buildings that the fire department, you know, they allow. I think the fire department could burn that house.
Burn it down and maybe get some of, my big fear there, you know, there's a trailer right there, right up against that property line. Then Kathy Briggs's place is on the other side of it, Tish's place is there. If that weed patch ever caught on fire, it'd take both of those places right with it and in a hurry.
Well, it's that tan seat, Waldwall Tan Seat, about that tall.
It's five, six feet tall. I mean, it's quite a cross. I guess it's tan, you could probably grow anything in there, nobody would know it, but...
It's all mashed down, I suppose, by the snow now, but there'd be quite a carpet of that dry build up. Sometimes in April, we get a dry snap and there is a kind of a mini wildfire season in April, mainly from human causes, you know?
You have talked to it?
Well, I, I did a number of years ago. I ran the people down.
I'd, I'd been told that, that they didn't have any interest in doing anything. That was gonna be their retirement. And I thought, wow.
I don't know about the generations though, that's what I'm wondering about. I, I thought that maybe there was like parents that had the place for a long time, but then they're passed on and it's the kids.
I don't know what, it's not his kids, it's like nieces and nephews or something, I think, yeah. That's what Rosie told me.
Looks like it would cost more to clean it up, make it presentable than it's worth.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, it looks like a pretty big lot, but, I think it's two lots.
And then you got all that scrap iron there. There's old mining equipment there.
Oh.
He was an old gold miner.
Okay.
He was about the last one that did that little deal out there, Passenger Mines Field. There's a little old mine up there on the hillside.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of right under that big flat rock that sticks out up there. He mined that.
Comment. Looks like we have two publicers here. Nothing from Mr. Doug?
Two republicers?
Don't throw that label on me.
How about logger? Can we still label you as a logger?
Well, maybe someday.
Someday?
Yeah.
We're still working on that, trying to convince the wire, and that's what we need.
Mr. Keptie, how are things in St. Regis?
Things are a little uneasy.
Do tell.
The neighbors are getting a little restless about this Shannon Anderson proposal for Tin Can Alley. So there is some unrest.
That letter here, did you say you got a letter, Duane?
Yes.
We got a letter from, so we, Duane, I didn't meet yet, he knows what you're talking about a little bit.
Okay.
But continue.
Yeah, Shannon, he presented to the resort district a couple of weeks ago and gave a good overview of things and those, you know, they're a reasonable example. And they're all for it, of course, you know? Business, community, and the resort district are all for it because it brings money into the community. I was the lone skeptic and I got shouted down.
Skeptic, skeptical of it happening or skeptical of...
I said, it's just, I don't see the logistics working out, I don't see the timeline working out. I just see too many, too many unanswered things, you know, with getting the site ready, traffic, parking, security, sanitation, utilities, you know, trash, noise. I mean, there's so many things there to consider. And it seems like a really quick turnaround, so I'm the skeptic. But when I bring that up in front of other people that are seeing dollar signs, then I'm the bad guy, so, you know, I gotta get along with everybody, so. Anyway, I am a skeptic of it, but some of the neighbors are getting concerned about it. The Carters, Ben and Caroline Carter caught wind of it. Shannon was assuming that he could cross adjoining properties to get back and forth from the park to the event. And I tried to explain to him, said, well, you need to consider that Carters have a big block right in the middle between the park and his place, you know?
What are you gonna do about going down that dip there anyway? You're not gonna drive or bring down through that unless it's, unless it's your mud bog rig.
Well, that used to be the state land that went to Shannon. Yeah, that's, that's not a good road. No, I think it was gonna be foot traffic.
Oh, yeah.
Because he wants to take over the, he wants to take over the park for camping.
Yeah.
And...
I'm not in agreement with that.
No, I talked to Steve about it and our park committee is not in favor of it because for one thing, it's a venture on private land, a benefit for a private landowner ultimately. And using a public park to benefit a private venture, that's one thing. And also, it's a week before the softball tournament. We will all be working avidly to get the fields ready for softball and healing up anything from the flea market.
Flea market, yeah, that's, and that's always been the battle.
If it's a really wet weekend, we're gonna have some catch-up work to heal up that park and get it ready for softball. So the park group is not in favor of letting them take over the park.
And that's, I think that if, if someone goes back and looks in maybe the bylaws or something, there was, when Shirley Anderson put all that together, there was, there wasn't gonna be any camping in that park, you know? Now softball tournament, they allow a little bit, but...
Well, yeah, it's posted, it's posted overnight camping for the general use, but for sanctioned events. Flea marketeers, some of them have to camp in there with their, with their boots, and that's fine.
Yeah, yep.
You know, because it's all sanctioned.
But I mean, just to be open for, for...
General.
For that, that event to come over and say, hey, we want to camp in your park.
Yeah.
It's never been that way.
Those events are happening in the park, so they're not happening somewhere else and getting the camp in the park.
Yeah, and they're put on by the community club.
Right, right. So there's those angles. Sanctioned events like softball, we actually encourage the guys to camp in the back there so they're not out driving around drunk.
Yep.
I mean, some of them have places to camp elsewhere, but we'd rather have them camp back in there, stay put than out on the streets. So that's one of those things, as long as they're, you know, clean up after themselves, which, you know, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But I think the new softball organization is better organized and I've got a lot of faith in them running a tight ship. So that's kind of what's going on with that. I know Tim is kind of in the same league I am as being a skeptic about this whole thing. And Bruce Wood called me the other morning, what can we do about it? I said, well, gotta visit with the commissioners, you know, visit with the neighbors. I, I don't know, you know? I'm not gonna stick my neck way out there. I've gotta get along pretty much with everybody, so.
You know, it sounds, it's similar to the, and Missoula County has zoning... You know, it sounds, it's similar to the, and Missoula County has zoning in areas, you know, but the Rock Creek Testicle Festival every year out there, all those people out there, they just hate it, you know? But there's really not anything they can do other than provide a little bit of extra boost in law enforcement because you can't always control what someone privately does with their land. I mean, like Mr. Wood points out, but he said there's no 60-foot road width as required by law, but that's only required by law if that property was to be subdivided. If it maintains and it's whole piece like it is, you don't have to have a 60-foot right of way. So there's little things that people don't always understand that, well, we can't, we're not giving an exemption to anybody to use that road, it's just the fact it's not being subdivided, we're not allowed to enforce the 60-foot.
And there isn't very many streets in St. Regis that do have a 60-foot either. Most of them are under 60 feet.
Right.
Just because of the logistics and things.
And he talks about septic and stuff for commercial use, well, that's, we don't have any zoning, it's not commercial use, it's private ground. Whether you wanna throw up a stage in the middle of your field in Drummond like there is and have a concert, you can. Or whether you wanna throw up a testicle festival with hardcore bikers, you can. It's not commercial, obviously, but in the septic thing, Tim Reed would have a little bit of involvement with it, but they're probably gonna be porta potties like we have at the fair, you know, or... So some of these things he's addressing, I mean, they're not really wrong, they're not really...
No, and his big concern is he's mom, she lives right across the road from it.
Well, the traffic congestion, right. Traffic congestion and trespassing on private property to find a place to park, littering, you know, unruly behavior.
But those very same things Glenn, we deal with during the flea market, we deal with it during the baseball. I mean, unless I'm home, people will park right in my driveway at the flea market. We did, oh, if the sun's out, you know, and there isn't a parking spot to be had, they'll park right in my driveway. They go out there and ask them to move and if they're there, they'll move, and if not they're, they're there till they move it, you know?
Yeah, Saturday's pretty crazy around there.
I don't have a problem with that, I mean, I don't like them, they're not gonna block my driveway, but I don't like them parking on, on my property, but, you know, if you're not there or you don't see it or...
It's the classics, I mean, none of us want that in our front yard, that's why they say, not in my backyard, you know? We had the same issue when Lincolns were gonna do that up there on their, where they have their mud races, they had that big concert, what was that weekend thing called? And all the people from Deerlick and Big Creek and they were all, even though they were a mile and a half away, they were mad too for the same reasons and it's kinda like...
Was it mainly the noise up there?
Yeah, they thought they would hear across the interstate.
Oh, they claimed you could hear Clear to Self tea. And they still do that, that's, that's coming up, yep. That blues fest thing, it's, they still do that, you don't hear it now, but...
Yeah, I wish that there was more, you know, stuff we could do, but then again, it's Mineral County, that's why we, some of us like it here is because, because our, our only other option, same with the gravel pit problem when they were all in here, Mineral County would have to start zoning everything. And I don't know if everybody would like us to start zoning commercial, residential, you can't do that, you can't do that, because that's kinda like why everybody moves here.
Or incorporation.
Yeah. I don't know. But I mean, all we can do is make sure that Tim Reed, because he does have some health and sanitation thing. And, and another thing, I don't know if this is true, the guy hasn't come to talk to us about it, but security, he's claiming he's gonna hire security guys to patrol within the event.
Right. Yeah, he says he has lots of people available from all aspects.
Yeah, and if he's got that much ground, you'd think that they'd be parking, what is this, 100 acres or something, Tim, that plot for this mud bog? 180. You'd think that the parking would resolve itself. I don't think they'll be parking in St. Regis, will they?
Well, depends on how he lays it out, I mean, it's...
Well, he's trying to get hold of Jensen's to borrow some of their field and for camping and parking and...
It is gonna be a little more confined, it's only one way in and out of there.
He has this piece over here.
But, you know, the, the park is the same way, there's only one way in and out.
Tree, that's treeless.
It's all before and after. Yeah, he plans to do a one-way traffic pattern. He's trying to do a one-way traffic pattern through, through the neighborhood, so it flows.
I see. We were just telling him, Tim, because we got a letter, I don't know if he got this letter from Mr. Wood, but...
So what's this, Tim? What is this?
St. Regis lots. This is the...
Oh, that's the building I was just talking to you about?
Yeah. These are out there too.
Oh, I know, yeah, and they're right in the neighborhood there.
Should we take a vote?
So what is it, half an acre or? I mean, it's pretty big, that property?
180 acres?
No, no, the one that, with the trailers and the...
Oh.
I don't know, how many, how big is it, Tim?
It's pretty deep.
I'd say it's a couple acres.
Couple acres?
I got an acre and a half there and it must be as...
It's pretty deep, isn't it?
But Tim suggested that maybe we put him on the agenda one of these days and get him to come in and maybe give us some...
Some background on what he... I'd be a good idea.
It seems like to me that he's gonna be scratching himself off then if he don't go to work here pretty soon, though.
Work on, what, you got some...
Get it prepared.
Well, he's gotta do some pits and, I mean, you can, for the mud bogging.
Oh, that Westfall property's on Wood Street there?
That's Main Street, isn't it?
Isn't it Main Street? That's on Main Street.
Yeah, I know, Bruce has been in contact with me lately, he's not happy about it, I know. How old a fellow is Bruce?
My age, 13,000.
Same class I was?
Okay, thanks. 13,000, okay math man, how much of an acre is that?
What's that?
14,000, 42,000, 560 in an acre.
Quarter of an acre?
Quarter.
So Tim, before you came in, I was just kinda telling Glenn that, well, unfortunately Mineral County, we don't have zoning or anything we really can require. I said, mainly the best thing is that you'll have to be on top of it for the health and sanitation part and, you know, and then there's the law enforcement part, but what else is, you know, what else do you think about this? The regulation...
Wanted to have a little more control over a situation like that. Counties have adopted large events ordinances that can start addressing traffic and safety and...
They can't put up a bond or something or...
Well, they just, they just apply for a permit and pay for the permit and...
When we talked about that, when that started up in the west end.
So I didn't, I didn't, I've talked to Tom about it, but we were gonna get on your schedule one of these days here, sit down and talk to you about that one out there. I mean, he's, I, I got the impression from Tom Bauer that he had talked to Shannon about
Sounds like the Bruce Wood letter here, he said he talked to Sheriff Bauer and he's not too concerned about it. Maybe it's because Shannon says he can have security in there too?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it seemed like they talked and, but then things have transitioned a little bit because the mud bogging in that part of it never was out there before.
I didn't realize that was an amphitheater.
Well, that, that picture of that, you can really see that basin in there on Google Earth.
Yeah, you can.
I mean, he's, you know, they cleared all the trees and cut most sites of that out there and stuff.
Yeah, he said they'd be out there doing active clearing next week, I believe.
Oh, really? Yeah, they better get on it if they're gonna...
Am I looking at, is it like this? Yeah, there's a town.
Yeah, he, this, this is gonna be the amphitheater.
Oh.
So, I mean, it's, he's just gonna set both sides, but, you know, they, I mean, they, this is still sloped on there, but they cleared all the...
Actually, it's quite a ways away from town, isn't it? Where's this mud bogging gonna go on?
Right there.
Right by, in this drainage, same drainage?
I don't, I don't know that.
I don't know where.
Well, they owned all this land, didn't they?
Yeah, but the rest of it's too steep to, it's gonna have to be down on that slide.
It's obviously not gonna, you know, be down on there. These are all those little trees and stuff, they, they didn't take out of there, went up the hillside, took all the big stuff up the hillside.
Yeah, that was Tommy that did that.
Who did?
I think Tommy Lauren.
Oh. But as far as regulation, Tim, then really the only things currently in Mineral County for regulating would be enough porta potties and what else would you be looking at?
Food vendors.
That, that is not really almost that, you know, it's a little nebulous whether that's really something that you can regulate or not. He's gonna sign off on the, I think he's signed off on the temporary food service out there, but we don't have something tied to that that says you're gonna have to have these much sanitation out there. I mean, they have to have it, they have to address it, but, you know, they're pointing to a standard. They, the old liquor licenses used to have us tell the people how much of that they had to have before we signed off on the liquor licenses. Somewhere, the Department of Revenue has changed the liquor license thing, so if you have a catering endorsement and you just go catering event and somebody wants to protest it, they can, but I don't think that they even tell Department of Revenue anymore.
So this permit that you were talking about for large events, Missoula County, they currently have something like that? So that's what they do for the Testy Fest?
No, I don't, I don't, you know, whether, because that Testy Fest is totally on private ground in there, but...
Yeah, but so is this.
I know, but I...
So what would that do for us if we did that?
I, I mean, I just, I wanna be careful, I don't know if they issue large event things that strictly, you know, if they apply it to private property, I think they do, but I don't, I don't wanna say.
Like the same thing like what, if you wanted to buy a hunk of ground and have it be a wedding venue, do you have to, same thing, every time there's a wedding, you have to put in for a permit? Because there's, you know, there's 200, 300 people at, those weddings at Petty Creek that have wedding venue and they're just all outdoors and they have music and they have food vendors and does Missoula County require a large gathering of so many people or more to go through that process every time?
That, that's the way I would read their ordinance.
Even though that's private land?
Yeah, I, but I, I wanna get that confirmed with them that they're, they're doing this. I, I, I think it's that way because they started the large group ordinance because of that Avery Day Cager and stuff, so. That's funny, that all out of...
Because you'd think that if everybody's up in arms about that Testy Fest, which I know they have been for many years, that why, why is that permit continuing to be issued when they have so many problems surrounding it?
Well, I'm, they, they pretty well took care of that, that, I mean, they started issuing enough DUIs out there as a...
Yeah, but the neighbors still don't like all the naked contests going on and the riffraff and the biker...
Point your binoculars the other way. I mean, there isn't a neighbor close enough to see me. So, I, I mean, there's, there's, there's not an immediate neighbor that could, line of eyesight see the Rock Creek lodge there.
No, people on the other side, no, but they, still the same things that St. Regis is saying. Trash, alcohol being brought in, bikers being brought in, parking issues, I mean, all that stuff. Yeah, you can tell people to turn your binoculars the other way, but they're still not satisfied with that.
Yeah, I, I think though the venue with this out there is that the person that we haven't had a discussion with yet is Shannon Anderson. What do you think you're gonna do? He's talked to me about all of the food and the other parties.
I think he'd be amenable to coming into a public meeting where we could quiz him and then if the public had any questions too?
Well, he, he may or may not, I, I don't think he wants to come in here.
Getting grilled, yeah.
I just wanted to give you a heads up, you'll be here in, you'll be here in more. Okay, and then next topic?
Yeah, unless, Joe, did you have any?
No, I'm just waiting for Glenn.
Yeah, we're here, we're here for another topic, I'll do that last.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this is another one in St. Regis. How many years have we talked about Schober's encroachment on the state right of way? A lot of stuff, okay? And we've never seen to get any help from anybody to try to deal with it. And for, when, when there are events at the park, they pull their fleet of trucks right up to the fog line and put traffic candles there and encroach way onto the right of way and make it really dangerous for foot traffic up and down the road. They're deliberately make it difficult for people to get up and down the road. And they've got other structures on state right of way that have never been dealt with. They've got that hedge of spruce trees right at the intersection...
Sorry.
Of county parkland, national forest and Schober's where those three come together at the dangerous corner, you know? And we, the community has been concerned about it for a long time and can't seem to get anybody else to help take action on it. So I called Wayne Deichstra, the new maintenance guy. Had a long talk with him and he was vaguely familiar about the situation, he was gonna look at it.
Yeah.
And see, you know, get his drawings out for the right, for the right of way widths and those kinds of things. And try to get to the bottom of it and talk to some of his people that have been around a long time for history on it. So, he said there's, his department can't really do anything about it and goes into an enforcement type mode and it would be highway patrol.
But, but if they could go out there and establish the pins, if they would reset or mark by the right of way, then you could at least push Schober stuff back off the right of way.
Yeah, then, then you could enforce it and say, you're encroaching on the right of way and get it off.
Flag all of your private property you want to, but don't flag the right of way. And so, they, if their survey crew could set a pin, you know, on, on the frontage out there and get two straight lines between here and there...
And then they could send a letter to Schober saying, we have re-surveyed and we understand where our right of way is and in the future, any, any future encroachment will be addressed by law enforcement. But I mean, they need to kinda let them know that, hey, we don't want you doing this anymore because you've been doing it for so long. And suddenly the highway patrol went out there and said, hey, you can't do that, they're gonna go, we've done it all the time, what are you talking about? They kinda need a letter from Steve Felix saying, it's come to our attention and it needs to end for...
See, that's part of the problem is...
Kathleen Woodford?
They've been enabled to do that for so long.
Yep.
My grandfather did.
Right, grandfather did. Across the road, they've got trucks parked on state right of way too.
Yeah, we are.
And they just, they go the other way to make it park for, for people visiting the park for those events, for parking and walking. And I also asked Wayne if we could get some or no parking signs to put up enough camels on the road. Because we can't let people park on the shoulders because it narrows the road too much. And they only put up a few years ago and half of them got run over by drunks and gone. And we, the crowd got away from us last year, we had so much congestion over on the side by Bennett that I lost control of the parking on Camels Hump Road and made people up on the shoulders and every which way. They ignore the signs, but if we had more signage, county law could at least go and force. So we're working on some improvement there for things. Okay, last topic is Mullen Road. I asked Joe Hughes to come by, we're gonna go hike Mullen Road at the Point of Rocks today. It came to the attention of Congregation District and Historical Society that our company had disturbed potentially parts of Mullen Road up there during the winter when they were replacing poles and trouncing around. And you can see, you can actually see the dirt disturbance from the freeway. We're gonna take a closer look today.
I talked to a neighbor down there and he said it looked like they...
There's pictures here.
Yeah, they did make a bit of a mess in the neighborhood, surprised me when he thinks it's a mess. And also, they possibly deviated off of their normal right of way, but I don't know.
Okay, well...
They might have for access, you know?
Pardon me?
They might have for access?
They, well, so it's basically the old Milwaukee Railroad. They, well, so it's basically the old Milwaukee Railroad, and when the Milwaukee Railroad went bankrupt and Montana Power bought their, their railroad grade for utilities and they have an easement to maintain, sustain their lines and all that. So, when it was really deep snow, they couldn't get in there for, whether it be a downed tree across it or whatever, so they took a CAD in there and plowed the whole road. And then they also have some, some of the power lines they were strongly relying on were the original Milwaukee Railroad pantograph lines.
Oh.
And so, they needed to replace some because they were getting old and rotten, so they brought in a backhoe, like you could see them up there working, but it looks to me like they ended up going off of the Milwaukee Railroad line to some different ground, I don't know for, for ease for them or if it was because they didn't wanna be where this new interpretive trail right is, if they're trying to get away from that, but I don't know the logistics of how far up the hill, how wide is their easement right-of-way for their power line, but that's what they were doing out there was replacing poles. Basically, it's from that tunnel, uh...
Towards Albertson.
Yeah, east of the tunnel towards Albertson.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, it's state land around it. They draw those land exchanges and things.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's state land on the west side of the tunnel and then maybe some on the east side a little bit.
Well, I think that whole corridor is, was part of that whole...
Land exchange.
Land exchange deal.
Yeah.
And Fish Rock Parks and DNRC did some internal, they did some internal swapping and, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Chuck me, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's our mission this afternoon is to go size it up.
Yeah.
I think what started the whole thing was a lady that locks her dogs in there and whenever we got ahold of the CD and was complaining about it. So, we're just kinda trying to track down what, you know, really took place and who the ownership is.
Yeah, nor, it was Northwestern Energy that was out there.
Right.
Yeah, I think they actually had a dozer and they actually made, built a new little road.
Yeah, it looks like some roads.
Yeah.
And the lady said that there, there's, there's an old homestead in there perhaps and a spring and, and she said they went right through that.
Yeah, the old charade place.
Yeah.
Spring and...
Orchard and different.
Yeah, you can just see the little concrete footings where the foundation used to be, but at least, they had, they had, they had to get rid of it when the highway interstate came through because they didn't wanna grant them access and there was no exit there, so they bought it. Well, so it would've been MDLT's land, but maybe they swapped it for whoever's doing the trail now. Yeah, and you can get it from the Nigger or West Mountain Creek side.
Right.
Or if you wanted to go on the other side, probably could ask Harvey Mead, he might let you go in there inspected if...
We'll just go in from the West Mountain side.
Yeah.
We can drive in partway, but then the, those through cuts...
Is that where you were transit? Which one?
Bubba Gold.
Boba?
Oh, Bubba Gold.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Apparently, in those through cuts of the old railroad grade, some rocks have slipped in and so you can't drive as far as you used to be able to. We'll find out.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I thought you could drive all the way up to where they have, they have the little wooden stake bollards, if you will, where only you or a bike can go through, but...
A little turnaround there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll find out.
Yeah. Well, she'll be happy that someone listened to her complaint anyway. And now I'm curious, because after the neighbor told me, "Yeah, they look like they built a new road up their mountain there," so, we're gonna have to see what you've learned.
Well, we just wanna find out too if whoever's owns the property or whatever would have some type of policy for some mitigation that needs to take place on it.
Yeah. You would think, but you never know.
Seeding if, seeding if nothing else.
Yeah.
Weed control.
Yeah, weed control. Yeah.
And, and they perhaps don't know about it.
Yeah. All right, we'll keep you posted, I'm kinda interested on that one.
You know, especially since it has a little bit of heritage value.
Historical value and, yeah.
Okay, I'm done.